The call this morning, meeting the order. The first thing we're going to do this morning, I'm going to read a public announcement concerning open meeting laws. And with that, with the COVID-19 pandemic, the data practice office of the Department of Administration has provided guidance and open meeting law adjustments under the Minnesota statute of 13D in Pacific's circumstances. Section 13D, 021 requires the public body to make a determination that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of health pandemic or emergency declaration under the Minnesota State 12 to make the allowed adjustments. Today I am making that declaration. Under this declaration, Clay County Board meetings may be conducted by telephone or other electric means, so as long as the following conditions are met, all participating members can hear one another. Just to check, Jenny, can you hear us? Jenny, you on? Did we lose her?
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Members of the public at the physical meeting location can hear all discussions unless attendance at the regular meeting location is not feasible due to the health pandemic. At least one member of the public body, chief legal counsel or chief administrative officer, is present at the meeting location unless unfeasible due to health pandemic, and all votes are taken by road call. Further board meetings may be held under these parameters as long as the pandemic or emergency declarations are in effect. Thank you. With that, we'll go into approval of the agenda.
Move approval with additions. Second with additions.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the agenda with the additions. All in favor?
Aye.
We have to roll call.
You have to roll.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
District one, I guess, is first. She'll call it off.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Waylon.
Aye.
The next thing, we've got citizens to be heard, and I don't see any citizens here that are not on the agenda. Do we have bills this morning? Approval of the bills?
Not yet seen the bills this morning, Mr. Chair.
Let's see what it... Okay. Okay, with that, we'll go into the approval of landfill construction contractor project. Kirk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Work us through that.
As you all remember, I was here two weeks ago before my abbreviated vacation to talk about the landfill construction at the landfill, obviously. We are going to construct a new cell this year, and with the construction of the new cell, we hope to get an additional eight to 10 years of capacity at the landfill. In addition, we are going to install 13 new wells, which will help with the orders out there as well. We got three bidders that responded to our RFP for the construction work, and I handed it out. I'm sorry I didn't get into the packet. It was an omission on my part. We got, as I mentioned, three bids. We got one from Bersky Excavating, Comstock, and Blombeck Construction. Upon review of these bids with our consultant, Matt Evans from Burns &amp; McDonald, we are recommending that we select Comstock for the construction. Although they're not the lowest bidder, Bersky, their bid was incomplete. It did not include several of the items that we were asking for in the bid, so as a result, their bid was incomplete. As a result, Comstock is the next lowest bidder. They've done quite a bit of work at the landfill. They've done quite a bit of work in the county, so we're going to be very happy with their work, I believe. In addition, we had two types of bids that we were asking for. One was for the entire project, which included a perimeter pipe around the west side of the landfill. We also asked them to take that out of the bid as well. I would recommend that we include the perimeter pipe as part of the overall project. The primary reason why that is, is that we'll hit some redundancy as a result of that, so we'll be able to use that additional flare should the other flare go down. So with that, I stand to answer any questions you all may have, Mr. Chairman, and I encourage you to approve this recommendation.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, during our subcommittees on this through the Southwest Advisory Committee, you know, I was one of the ones that brought up about this perimeter pipe, and if you recall, the original, the flare that we have, it sits way back in the far corner, and we're putting a new flare now that's up, going to be right behind the building that we share with Highway between the two, and it's going to heat that building. But the other flare is still going to be important to have, and as, by having that pipe in there, we basically complete a loop, and it allows for even for future expansion that we can tap into that outside line. And I agree that we should do it now because doing it later would really be costly, and you know, when you start dealing with liners and all of those things that get involved. So I support Kirk's recommendation to include the alternate in the project.
Is this project, or is we completed this year?
My Mr. Chairman, yes, we hope to get construction underway sometime, as soon as we can get into the area. So yes, we hope to have it all done by the end of the year.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve that bid with the perimeter pipe piping.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Jim. Any further discussion? Okay, with that, we'll take a road call vote on the bid for Comstock, award the bid to Comstock.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Waylon.
Aye.
Okay, once it passes.
Very good, thank you much.
Get it done. Okay, with that, we'll go into Nancy on upcoming local board of appeal and legalization. Is there a new procedure, or what are we working on today?
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
As you know, the month of April comes with our local board of appeal and open books. We have 41 jurisdictions, and of those eight are doing the local board, and the rest then are handled through the open book process. On the afternoon of March 18th, we received an email and a memo from the Department of Revenue as to how the process should run for our upcoming meetings, and that was in your packet, as well as this was sent out to the eight jurisdictions that are having their local meetings so that they're aware of these changes that could occur. In that memo, it talked about that the fact that these meetings will be held, they need to be held, and it's an opportunity for our taxpayers to know the process and have their opportunity to appeal. The only thing that was different is that they added the virtual meeting, which you just talked about at the beginning of your meeting, and one jurisdiction has opted for that already. The city of Morehead will be holding their meeting as a virtual meeting, and the city of Holly is working on a go-to meeting for the public. Their council and our staff will still be there, will still be there, but the public then is asked to use the go-to meeting option. We're also working with another jurisdiction who meets in a very small, compact office, so we're trying to get a larger space for that so we can have more social distancing as well. But otherwise, that's the process for our open books. Our notices have gone to the vendor. They will be going out to taxpayers by the end of the month. That's the deadline anyway, so that's what we're hoping for. As far as some internal, the open book process, we have added an extra statement on the notices that we will be taking appeals only in written and phone through that process because then that would limit the amount of people that would be coming to our office. So that's how we will handle that. The other thing that we have decided, and we kind of worked with more assessors in our district to see what other policies they've been taking, we've decided that as far as an office policy, we will not be doing any interior inspections during that appeal time. We will do onsite visits from the exterior, and we will ask that the property owners send us photos of those interior situations. We feel that's for the protection of the property owner as well as our staff. So that is our process. So again, to recap, basically, the meetings will go on as scheduled. They can either be met virtually, and they still have an opportunity to do that. It's a little harder for our townships to have that kind of capability, but they can go that way. And if they choose not to meet, it would go to an open book format for this year and one more year. And I believe that our parties that are currently having open book do not wish to lose them, so they really would like to try to hold their meetings and go for that. And at this time, the county board will go on as far as the county board of equalization as planned. That is in June 16th, but if there's a change at that time, we'll cross that bridge when we need to.
All right. Is there any action we need to take on that, or just a matter of you making us aware of what's, how you're going to proceed with this?
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Any questions for Nancy? No, thank you so much for the update.
You're welcome.
Hope everything works out okay.
Hope so, too.
Ah, we'll take, Jim, we'll take your item next. We got, oh, excuse me, I think we forgot to do the approval of the minutes from last... You've got the minutes from March 10th? Did you guys get a copy? You got a copy of that?
Yes.
Forgot to get approval of that and make them...
Mr. Chair, move approval of the minutes.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the minutes from March 10th. Got a second from anybody?
Yeah.
And a second from Jim. Any discussion? No, we'll take a road call vote on approving the minutes for March 10th.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Waylon.
Aye. Okay. Now, Jim, you've got a request to fill two vacancies in the juvenile center.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm requesting to refill two vacancies in the juvenile center, one in our security unit, one in our non-security unit. These are both covered in our 2020 budget. Request permission to backfill if internally they get filled.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to fill two juvenile council positions with backfill. Any further discussion? Take a road call vote.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Waylon.
Aye. Anything further on that? We're all set, okay? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll go into Kathy McKay, our Public Health Director, to give us an update on COVID-19. Good morning, Kathy.
I have my team here as well. So just an update, you know, we've, we activated our Public Health Incident Command Team, or our DOC, as we call it, our Department Operations. So we started in January, just virtual, March 9th, we did partial, and we are in full activation now as of March 16th. So we are, we are there Monday through Friday, and then we are virtual on the weekends. So we're in full operations because of this disease outbreak, obviously. Our role is a lot of the communication, so we're getting communication out to the public via social media, press releases, TV, et cetera. So there's, there's a large cry for information, so we're trying to meet all of those needs as much as possible because it takes quite a bit of time. We're also, we're also providing, as you know, a press conference on Wednesday, and so we'll be, we'll be doing that at 11 o'clock with Fargo and West Fargo and the mayor of Morehead, so we'll be providing information at that. I think that's going to continue weekly is kind of what they are discussing at this time because this is such a changing and ever-evolving situation that, you know, weekly updates are probably necessary for the public. And we've also done, you know, as you are aware and as you have sanctioned, some of the things that we've done within the county, and we'll continue to look at some of, some of the changes that we need to make besides the remote, the remote work, et cetera. There is, as you can tell, a shortage of test kits out there, just nationally. We have been in communication with our health partners across the river. So far, they said they're able to keep up, and they are not experiencing the shortage that is happening globally. So the number of cases in Minnesota jumped up. It was 169, and then as of yesterday, it was 235 positive cases. Again, that's just because they were able to catch up with the testing. Mayo Lab helped, the Minnesota Public Health Lab, catch up with their backlog. So when we see that large increase, it's just that the testing has been able to be caught up. We're still going to see increased cases. We're going to see the, you know, the spread, community spread. It's spreading across all of the states now, community-wide, so it's not just specific to international travel. So we're going to see increases in that. We, of course, as you've noted, we have the one deaths so far in Minnesota. So our messages are loud and clear about the social distancing, about, you know, the washing your hands, not touching your face, not shaking hands. All of those messages are vitally important for, for people to know. That's the best way right now without, they're still doing research on antivirals and, and a vaccine, but that's going to be a while before it comes out. So the best protection people have is just your personal protection. Remember surfaces, they're saying it can, the virus can live on surfaces from a few hours to a few days, and as they research that more, that, that may change, but that is the, the best information out there now, so we have to know that surfaces are contaminated. So if you're touching the surfaces and then touching your face, that's a good way for us to get infected. So in the incubation period is anywhere from one to 14 days. Average is about five, so by the time you've contracted the disease and are symptomatic, that's kind of the average is the five day, but anywhere between one and 14 days. So, you know, we're mindful of that as well. There's people I think are aware of going to the grocery stores in, you know, if you have one family member that can do the shopping, going to the grocery stores in limited numbers, all of the things that we're experiencing within our community. We also know that the changes are causing a lot of stress, and the stress level is, is going to rise, so we're getting information out about how to cope with stress, what kind of things can you do at home, et cetera. That information is going out. We're providing information in, in the school lunch kits that are getting out, so all the schools are providing lunches, meals for kids and families. So we're getting that information about how to cope with stress, and then how do you recognize that in your children? Because the children will certainly experience stress as well, just such a big change in, in the way we're, we're operating now. So we want to be clear about the messaging in regards to, you know, helping to spread that, you know, being, coping with stress and continuing some things at home with the gyms being closed and people are, you know, the activities, they have to think of other means. How can you get your activities? Because we do know that physical activity will help with, with coping with the mental and the stress. So we want people to continue to do activities as much as they can without having the availability of the gyms to go to. Josh, any updates from anything else, or Jamie?
Just one thing I want to point out, it's our, our public information teams do an excellent job of sifting through questions that are coming into the public health office and drawing that to the Minnesota Department of Health website and CDC website and addressing facts. And so because there is a lot of research that's going on out there and a lot of things that are being discussed, that's coming into us, and again, we only have, we can only focus on what's factual and what's true. As we search the CDC website and MDH website, sometimes there aren't clear answers because they are still learning and testing as they go along. But that's an important piece for us that we get the message out of what's actually on Minnesota Department of Health's website. The calls and communication with our healthcare providers also is important so that if we get calls from citizens, we refer them back to their provider, Sam Purdy sent you the information they're posting because there's clear guidance from our healthcare providers in terms of what they expect. If someone has symptoms, they want them to stay home and care for themselves, clear guidance on when they should call and ask for assistance. And an important message also that they're putting out there is if you do call for assistance, if you call 911, that you clearly identify to dispatch. Is it that you are in the, in the testing? Have you assumed you have it, or have you been positively tested? So dispatch is clear in terms of what they are, are in. That's what I was thinking there? Anything from your perspective, Josh?
Well, and I want to just mention that we're working with the homeless shelter because there is a concern about what will they do if somebody is ill or if someone is even positive. They don't have the ability to keep somebody safely quarantined. So we have an individual on our team that is working directly with them to try to determine what are we going to do with an individual that is homeless and where are we going to place them? So we're working on those plans, and hopefully we'll come up with some solutions for that. We also want to note that the, as you've seen in the media, blood donations are down, so anyone that's well and has the ability to donate blood, that's still vitally important to get the blood donations in. And then those with, the dental offices are reducing the services they're providing, so they're trying to not provide some of the routine services, but really looking at those urgent dental needs. There's an increase in people going to the emergency room because of that, so we're urging people to contact their dental providers because they'll still provide urgent needs. They just are trying to reduce the numbers that they're providing. A lot of it has to do with the, the personal protective equipment that they're trying to reserve, and so they're, they're really trying to just deal with those. So those people with dental needs, instead of going to the emergency rooms, are really trying to get them to contact your dental providers and, and then they'll work with you on that. We're really trying to flatten the curve, so we talked about flattening the curve, and that's what we have, we're trying to reduce this big surge of infection because it will tax the health system. So really flattening the curve is trying to do just what we're doing, trying to decrease the, the virus from circulating by doing all the things we can to reduce that. So flattening the curve is the, is the important thing, just so we don't have a big surge in the healthcare systems right now. So that's pretty important that we all, we all are vitally important in practicing those, those things that we address all the time. So that's, that's a big message, and we're going to continue to pose that. Wash your hands, cover your cough, those kinds of things. Do you have any questions that we have not talked about?
I can wait.
Okay, Kevin?
Thank you, Kathy, and I, Steve, I think this is, we should get this weekly update, and I, I would like to request that we can get breakdowns of this meeting, and I think the segment that Kathy provides to us, a link should go out to all of us on that, and I would, because I'd like to be able to share it on social media. Social media right now seems to be everybody's home, and this is their source for information, and I, I think we need to really use it as much as we can, and I think hearing directly from public health is extremely important. And I, you know, with what you mentioned about, you know, you deal with the facts, and there's so many things that are going on out there and set out there, and, and a good source to go if you do have concern or questions, there's, you know, public health is probably the right place to go for that. I don't, I certainly don't have the answers to a lot of those things, other than the fact that we listen to them to make policy decisions. So you're the right people for that, and thank you for being, going to the press conferences, too, and that's your, I think people would rather hear from you than us on this, so. So thank you for that, and, you know, I would just urge, and then also on our, you know, whatever you can do in working with our website, on being able to keep things up to date on this, it's, that's a good thing, and sharing that link, we can share that link as well through social media. Right now, that's where everybody's going for their information, so. Thank you, Kathy.
Now, thank you, too, for, I mean, we get all kinds of information through our newspapers, through our TV and stuff like that, but it's nice to get it locally from you, Kathy, and your staff here. Thank you so much for coming here on this weekly now, so, and we'll, I think we'll continue doing that till we're over this COVID-19, so thank you so much for that. Any other comments? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Gabe, did you have anything that you want to present today?
No, no, I came to support Kathy and public health. I've been working with them closely, and they're doing a great job with supporting, it's a supporting agency to public health.
Mr. Chair, if I could, yesterday, we received an update on our other state of emergency. Is there anything that you would want to share pertaining to the flood?
Want me to walk up to the front?
If you would.
I just want to say one thing, that Gabe is an essential part of our, our team. He is there every day with their briefings, and so he's vital to our incident command team, so didn't mean to leave you off.
Regarding the flood, obviously, the flood forecast, the latest one, it's looking good. We're having a nice melt. The weather looks like it's, for the next 10 days or so, is going to be cooperating. I did touch base with Dave Overbaugh yesterday from Highway Department, county engineer, and they have been working, if you hadn't informed you already, they are working on kind of clearing some ditches and culverts and stuff, those vital areas. He said they have their, oh, golly, their de-icer for melting, ice and stuff, culverts, yeah, ready to go, and so just kind of playing the weather, you know, playing it by ear and working on their needed areas right now. So right now, things are looking good. I mean, we've got our plans in place, and Highway Department is the, the pointed part of the spear right now, and they're doing what they need to do to help, you know, help the water flow better when that happens. I do have a big concern on field debris. I do think we're going to probably have some plug culverts and whatnot due to cornstalks, and, and so they're going to have to be on top of that, that, you know, if that starts flowing and plugs up a culvert, it doesn't take long for a section to get flooded out. So my big concern is the overland stuff, but right now, the, the melt is cooperating with us, so that's good. Any questions regarding that, or anything else that emergency management's been working on?
Gabe, back on the COVID-19, I think I just read here nationally that in terms of your area with the emergency services, that there's been some concerns about protective equipment.
Yeah, PPE.
Are you running into that?
Absolutely. So I had a meeting with the, a phone conference with the state UOC. This was last, I think, end of last week when they gave the update on that, and most PPE, like the N95 masks are one you hear a lot about, gowns, they're recommending like first responders and whatnot if they're going into a call that, you know, they may get exposed to it, to wear a gown. The state UOC is reporting that most of those supplies are on an eight to 10-week back order. So fortunately, we were able to scrounge up some of that stuff, and I've been distributing that out to our local first responders, a lot of the volunteer groups and whatnot. We did find a supplier yesterday for some face shields. We're also recommending eye protection, so hopefully we have 5,000 face shields coming in the next week or two, and then I'll disperse that to PDs, fire, rescue services. But yeah, it's, it's in short supply, so I guess if any of you happen to have anyone talk to you about donations, I know a lot of construction companies and things, things of that nature use P, N95s for like when they're cutting concrete and stuff, so if you, if you do hear of anyone or know of anyone that may have some of that stuff to donate, put them in contact with me, and then I'll make sure it gets out to our first responders. I did have a, an email this morning from Apple Tree Dental out of Holly, and I think they're doing a lot of the... I think they're doing a lot of the services that normally would be done over at the public health building, at the dental office over there. And they are in need of PPE, too. So I did relay to them that if I came across them, I would try to make some available to them also. So like I said, it's good to put the word out there and if anyone has ideas on donations, pass them.
So do all of our deputies that are out, do they have some of that equipment right with them that they, if they sense the need, they have it?
They do. And we've changed, most law enforcement agencies have changed some of their policy on responding to medicals. So dispatch asks the gamut of questions when someone calls in on a medical type deal. And if they answer yes to certain questions, like let's say they have a high temperature and things like that, dispatch gives out a certain code when they dispatch it out. And if it's not a life or death, like a CPR in progress type deal, our deputies don't need to respond. They will wait for FM ambulance. They've got more gear and equipment than our guys do. And they have procedures on how many people they're sending in. The other ones that are probably going through gear faster than our law enforcement are first responding agencies, volunteer ones like Holly Hurt, Ewan Rescue, Saban Rescue, because they're still responding to all those calls. And they've changed a lot of their policies and procedures on maybe just sending one person in initially if it's some, just to get some information from the patient so they can pass that along to FM ambulance.
Okay, thank you for that update. Anything further?
Steve, if we can have his part included with Kathy's on that link, I think that's good.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thank you, Gabe.
Okay, well, now we'll go to approval of the bills.
Remove approval.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the bills. We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Meany?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Mojo?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, bills approved. Without, we'll go into committee reports. Grant, you want to start us out today?
Not a lot to add to the PICC meeting last week after the board meeting. I think we've got another one scheduled today to get a, discuss some of the things that are going on. And then yesterday, we did a, I think most of us were on the phone for the construction update on the juvenile detention center. And that's still moving along. I think we're still, we've still got one or two meetings left before that project is done. But they're doing some of the final, you know, inspections now and getting things ready to complete that project. So that's the agenda. So that was it for me.
Okay. Jenny, you have a report?
Thank you. Last week, I attended the Metro Call meeting via teleconference. We discussed our COVID-19 measures going forward and upped the property insurance coverage based on the new construction that they did there. And last night, I attended, took part via teleconference with the Bubba River Watershed. They have an update from walking SWCD on their common crop update. They had a funding request attached to that that went through and then they authorized the environmental review on the Stone Creek project in Clay County. That's it.
Thank you. Kevin?
All right, I have two things. Most of my things were canceled last week, but yesterday we had, in the morning, we had a meeting with the Chair's Executive Committee Group regarding the diversion. And of course, most of that discussion was how we're going to plan in the future for meetings and how we're going to be dealing those. And a lot of them are going to be going to virtual meetings right now for social distancing We did, we did, they did talk a little bit about the FEMA CLOMAR update and they're looking at probably an anticipated approval of that in June, which will be a good thing. That's just another step moving forward. As of right now, everything is still kind of in line for the dates for the hearings that are going to be going on later on, for the trials that are, lawsuits that are occurring. And then yesterday afternoon, I did also, we did have the juvenile center. And I think the one thing, I think we reported on it before, but it looks like we're talking about the middle of April now before that thing to be turnkey or what's the other?
Certificate of Office.
There you go. That's the one I'm looking for. So, and that's when, that's when that building will be in full use. So that concludes my report.
On that certificate of office, are we looking at having an open house, that thing, for that or? I mean, that would have to be extended, I mean.
Right, we will at some point, yeah.
Yeah, we are, we are planning on doing something like that. Okay, very good. Jim?
Thank you. By teleconference, I attended the Lake Agassy Regional Library Board of Trustees meeting last week. We okayed remodeling of the used book truck. There's a remodeling project going on at the Menominee Library with the assistance of a Bremmer grant. We had a discussion of the decision to close Moorhead and the other 21 Lake Agassy regional libraries, 45 to 60 days going forward. They're stopping overdue fines, which is a good thing. And they're asking customers to hold the books in place for now. There was a discussion of deep cleaning the libraries and the difficulties involved in that. We're waiting for information from the Minnesota Department of Health. The downloadable ebook services are completely maxed out right now, as you might imagine. And there was a discussion of how to cope with COVID-19. The city of Moorhead has lots of new building options with Lake Agassy Regional Library being explored. Director Liz Lynch talked about possibly Lake Agassy Regional Library kicking in an amount of $10,000 to help fund the feasibility study with the city of Moorhead. And there was reports from all the area counties involved with dealing with the COVID-19 issues, counties dealing with building closings. That concludes my report.
The meeting I had was PICC, which Grant has already talked about, but the one thing we discussed, too, I mean, I mean, we just covered working from home and talking to Tim Dent this morning, that that process is working very good. So everything's working, I mean, our IT department has got that going real good, so.
Mr. Chair, I did want to bring up one other thing here before we get into Steve's report, and that has to do with new hires that we have going on. Back in 2008, when we had our last market crash and those types of things, that's when this board kind of instituted that all new hires needed to come back before this board. And I just think that with what we have going on, for example, James today came with two of them that are already in the budget. And it just seems to me that during this particular time, for the short term, I just think that we should allow that to happen through consent as long as it's already in the budget and they're just replacing people that are leaving. I don't, I don't think we need to have them come before us. And I guess I would like to see us at least maybe through April or May, suspend with them needing to come before us. And that would include them, their ability then to do the backfilling as well. I just, I just think it's, for right now, you know, until we get more information on this and things settle down and we know how this, what this is going to do to our budget for 2020, there's certainly going to be some, some changes that are going to, or demands on our budget, I'm sure that we don't know about yet. But I, I think we should do that.
Well, I guess I've always wondered why they come forward to, when it's something in the budget. But what is the reason that people have to come forward?
I do think it has to do with what Commissioner Campbell mentioned back in 2008. That was the adjustment that the board requested at that time. And so if this board would want to do that, we would certainly entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, if it's okay, I would move that we suspend with the department head's needs to come before the board for rehires and backfill for, right now, for the period through May.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion to suspend supervisors coming before us for rehires that are in the budget until May?
Yeah, through May.
Through May? Any further discussion?
And to your question, Mr. Chair, you know, back in 2008, when we did that, there was ever-changing demands on our budget. I mean, things were very similar to what they are right now in terms of the economy. And, but right now, you know, we don't really have the evidence to show how it's going to impact our budget. So until then, I just think, you know, we're talking about all the social distancing and all these things and I have yet to see us not approve one. It just, it just seems that right now it's the right thing to do. You know, come after May, you know, if we find out that impacts to our budget, then we may have to then look at those things. It has to be an option that would be available to us.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to suspend until May, until the end of May. Roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Hammett?
Aye.
Commissioner Rose?
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes on a five-vote vote. Okay, with that, we'll go to Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could start my update by bringing Darren Brooke forward. This past week, President Trump signed the Family First Act, which is going to have some impact on our county in dealing with the coronavirus, so.
Okay, thanks for, let me put this out, like everything else, it's a moving target, trying to keep up with the flood of information that's coming in and then figuring out what we can and can't do, or what we should and shouldn't do. And so as Steve said, there was the Families First Coronavirus Response Act that was signed and is due to go into effect no later than April 2nd. And as far as human resources and personnel is concerned with that act, is there's two parts of that. The first part is called, what they are calling the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act, which I will refer to as EFMLA at this point. And the second part is the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, which is, I'll just refer to as Paid Sick Time. So first, taking the Emergency Family Medical Leave Expansion Act, or EFMLA, what this basically does is that it gives, it expands the FMLA so that people that have a son or daughter that is under the age of 18, home because of the schools and the daycares are closed and they are unable to work from home, that they would fall under this act. And instead of being here one year for FMLA eligibility, they only have to be here for 30 days. So if they come out and they can work from home and they don't have kids that are under 18, then this act wouldn't apply to them. But if they cannot work from home and they do have kids that are home, then this act would apply to them. Some specifics of the act are, the first day, the first 10 days are unpaid, but they do have the ability to use vacation time if they have that available. And then after the first 10 days, they would be authorized to be paid two-thirds of their regular rate of pay, but it's capped at $200 per day and a total cap of $10,000 per employee. Like I said, they can use their own vacation accruals during the first 10 days if they desire to be paid. And what this does is it comes out to about, the $200 a day cap comes out to about anybody making $37.50 an hour or less. The $10,000 at $200 per day equals about 50 days, plus the 10 unpaid days would be the 12 weeks of FMLA. So it reverts kind of back to the FMLA, but it's different criteria at this point. And like I said, this becomes effective on April 2nd or sooner if the Secretary of Labor approves it. So that's the first thing.
Is that, is that just during a pandemic or what?
That's just during this time, yes, yes. These aren't permanent changes. As a matter of fact, all of this that I'm going to talk about today expires on December 31st of this year, but it could expire sooner probably if things go accordingly. The second portion is the Paid Sick Time. For Paid Sick Time, this is available on day one of somebody's employment. It's 80 hours or two weeks and it can run concurrently with the EFMLA as well. And the one thing that was interesting was that it has to be used prior to any other accrued leave that the person has. So basically what we have been talking about in the Personnel Issues Committee is this 80, 80 hours of bank, that if somebody doesn't have sick leave, we would front them the 80 hours in case they come down with something with the COVID-19 disease. So this is kind of the federal government saying, yes, you will do this 80 hours to front them those hours. There are two groups and with three situations in each. And depending on what situation it is, is dependent on how much the payments would be. So for instance, the first group, the one, two, and three, and I'll just read these off, the employer is subject, the employee is subject to the federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation order related to COVID-19. Number two, the employee has been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine due to concerns related to COVID-19. And three, the employee is experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 and is seeking medical diagnosis. So those first three, in that group one, would be eligible, if they, if they meet all those criterias or any of those criterias, would be available for up to $511 a day and $5,110 maximum. Remember, this is only for two weeks. Then they come out with a group two, which is four, five, and six. So the first group is you are actually infected with the COVID ID, COVID-19, and you have to stay home because of that. You're either self-quarantine or you're quarantined based on the federal, state, and local quarantine guidelines. The group two is a little bit more liberal on that. The employee is, number four is the employee is caring for an individual or subject to an order as described in one, two, or three, or one and two. So what that is saying is if I'm caring for somebody that has been quarantined, then I would fall into that number four in group two. Number five, the employee is caring for a son or daughter of such employee if the school or place of care of the son or daughter has been closed, or the childcare provider, such as son or daughter, is unavailable due to COVID-19 precautions. So all of this paid sick team is related to the COVID-19 disease, whether you have it or you're caring for somebody for it. The EFMLA is based on whether you can work from home or you can't, and do you have children that are home because of the schools and the daycares are closed. So that's kind of the distinction between the two. And the group two, number six, is the employee has experienced any other substantially similar conditions specified by the Secretary of Health and Human Services in consultation with the Secretary of Treasury or the Secretary of Labor. So if you're experiencing those things, but maybe you don't, aren't quarantined at that point, but you're experiencing and the doctor says stay at home, then that would be under group two, number six. Some of these, number five and some, and number six are kind of, some of it is left up to interpretations and we're still trying to figure out some of that. But if you're in that group two and you meet any of those categories, then that would go back to paying two-thirds of the salary, maximum $200 a day or $2,000 maximum. If you remember, that's kind of the exact same thing of what the EFMLA is paying as well, except the EFMLA goes longer. Under this sick leave, it only goes for two weeks. That's why the $2,000 max is less. And this paid sick time is effective 15 days after enactment, which is, we're looking at approximately April 17th. So I just kind of wanted to bring the board up to date on those two things. So I just kind of wanted to bring the board up to date on those two things that will have probably a significant impact on employees of the county. Yesterday, I did send out a, a information Excel spreadsheet to the department heads to see how many people we have working from home, how many people can work from home, essential and non-essential people. I got a good response. I didn't get a response from everybody because I was kind of late in the day. But right now, from what they reported, we have about 64 people working from home. We have about 192 that they said could work from home if they have to, or we had 18 that could do some limited work from home, and about 263 that basically they say could not work from home. Now, that's just a quick scrub of what we've found out so far. I do have some other ones. Kathy said she emailed me hers this morning, which isn't included in that total. So that's probably something that we'll have to scrub a little bit closer and see how we're, how we're going to do that. Like I said, this is a moving target. There's a lot of questions that are still unanswered, and we are having a Personnel Issues Committee after this to kind of dig down into this a little bit more on what we should be doing and can't do, and hopefully we'll have a little bit more information after we come out of the Personnel Issues Committee. So, and I'm open for any questions?
Well, I'm just waiting to see if you guys do, because I always have questions.
Well, we'll take you first.
Okay. So Darren is, so this goes from sometime in April through December?
April, uh, yes.
Yes, so is this going to be like other disaster situations where some of, obviously, this could end up being additional costs to the county?
Correct.
And I say that because if we end up having people who, for example, the 200 and some that can't work from home, and they end up having to be home, some of those positions, we need to replace those for what they're doing, wouldn't we?
Well, what do you mean by replace?
Well, temporarily, I mean, the work still needs to get done. So for example, we have correctional officers.
Right.
You know, we, you know, if, if some of them have to stay home, we have to bring in other correctional officers.
Due to the sickness rather than just the EFMLA?
Right, but we, but we still have, we still have those staffing requirements that we have to do.
Right.
So now we're paying, we're, we're paying the first who's at home under this deal, plus then we're paying, so that, that does create an.
That is possible, yes.
Right?
Yes, that is possible.
It's, it's not a possibility. I see it happening.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so with that, are, are, are these going to be things that potentially then that the federal government is going to reimburse us for?
I don't know at that time.
And should we then, as you go through this and talk about on your pick committee, should we be coding that information, or coding those things so that we're ready for it? I, I see Steve's probably looking for some.
Commissioner Campbell, if we could have Gabe come up, I think Gabe has some information that he can, he can share.
With the disaster declaration, that's possible that that would.
Well, yeah, I, I guess, you know, I, I would, you know, I, you know, these are kind of mandates coming out, and I, I'm not saying that I don't disagree with the mandates, but I'm also worried about, you know, where's this all going to come from, Gabe?
So I did receive a memo from FEMA, I believe, before I brought you, and it, it describes some of the things that, at least for now, they've identified that should be covered under the disaster declaration. And one of them is overtime costs for filling our COVID-19-related duties. So let's say for Sheriff's Office, we're having everyone code those on their timesheets. Lori has created a fun, excuse me, a fun code for COVID-19, so if we have an employee that stays home, they've been, due to childcare issues or they're quarantined or whatnot, and we have to backfill their shift, that employee that's working that overtime shift will code their timesheet under this COVID-19.
Very much like a flood.
Absolutely, like a flood. Like I said, what I received from FEMA, it appears that will be covered. Obviously, a lot of that still needs to be worked out when it comes time to submit that. But for now, the recommendation we have been receiving from HSEM is record and document things, to include equipment use, just like last week I delivered some PVE out to some of the first responding agencies, I recorded my equipment used to, my vehicle, vehicle time. So that, it appears that's going to be covered. Some supplies related to COVID-19, like for the public health stock, if they need equipment for that, people working from home, I've instructed Tim to also record that if he needs to purchase laptops, programs, whatnot. It appears some of that stuff will be removed, or at least a proportion of it will be covered. But obviously, some of that needs to be worked out yet with the federal government and the state government. No word yet from the state if they would be picking up the 25% portion, like you normally would during a flood event or something like that, as a state declaration.
You talk about overtime, you know, to record overtime, but what about regular time that's spent on COVID-19?
So no word yet if that is going to be recovered because they would normally be working that time, but if, I've instructed at least the Sheriff's Office and correction and stuff, if, let's say I have a, you know, my workdays are being spent on COVID-19, so I'm recording that on a 214 form, more so to report on man-hours. No word yet if that will be recoverable or reimbursable. Normally during disaster, regular time is not.
Mr. Chair, to your question, though, I, and, you know, Steve, I, I think, I think we need to direct all of our supervisors, you know, once this goes into place, if they have to replace somebody who meets these qualifications, and if they have to replace them with some temporary work, I think we should be coding all of that.
I agree.
I, without question, I think we should be coding all of that with the idea in mind that, that this is a, an unusual cost that's, because of this, that, you know, we can make the, we can, yeah, we can make the argument anyway that we should be reimbursed for those from, from the feds.
And we do have work with Lori, in addition to the people that Gabe has mentioned for law enforcement and the correctional facility, we also have other, other staff that also have had their time cards adjusted to, to address the, the regular time or the overtime for the COVID issue.
Anything further, Darren?
That is it.
Thanks for that update.
Mr. Chair, we do have a few other, other things here. I do think over the last week, nearly all of my time has been related to, to somehow the COVID-19. Again, we, we talked about our pick meeting that we had and our emergency board meeting subsequent to that. We had multiple meetings through, throughout the week with Judge Rosenfeld, Shelley Jeffers, and Brian's been there. Also, on this past Friday, Minnesota Supreme Court adjusted issue to order to restrict in-person access to the courthouse greater than what they had, had done. Right now, they're only hearing specific cases such as lockup juvenile hearings, civil commitments, and CHIPS, CHIPS hearings. This order opened up opportunities for the use of remote access, and so we're now seeing the correctional facility and the juvenile facility will have the ability to do ITV, which has not been something they've been allowed to do. And so both, both of the agencies have gone and purchased that, which will hopefully have covered under the parameters which Gabe just spoke about. Our courthouse particularly is going to be, well, this access will, it'll limit who can attend. Parents, parents, parents and attorneys for juveniles will be, will be the, the limit. We're looking at running, I believe, one courtroom, if I'm, if I'm not correct, or if I'm correct, and we're also going to be, under this order, most of court administration has been sent home, there'll only be a skeleton crew to deal with the hearing. Having said that, that doesn't change a whole lot of our operations from, from the Sheriff's Department. We still have to have coverage and making sure that we're accessing the public on the outside, and also providing security for the hearings that do take place. And so this did go into effect on the 23rd of this month, and it will be in effect at this point for a minimum of 30 days. So we, we've been trying to keep management, management or department heads up to, up to date with the information. Again, this week we had multiple, we had, in the last week, we had multiple management meetings, and again, I want to thank Kathy and her team for doing an excellent job of keeping us up to date. Throughout the week, I've had constant meetings with, with Mr. Melton, Tim Dent, Mark Stone, Darren Brooks, Joe Georgia, Lori Johnson, Gabe, Mark Empting. Also, I've been kind of trying to keep in contact with area county administrators to what their counties are doing. David, David Rowland and Associates has always been, has also been a, a very nice resource. And AMC continues to lead the way in providing feedback on, on both, on what's happening on the legislative front, and also locally. Yesterday, they rolled out a new app, application, providing informations on, on different documents counties are using, operations, information, any kind of agency announcements, orders, resolutions, and things like that, just general information. So that's been, that would be a nice tool, tool to use. On Friday, I did tour motor vehicle. As, as you guys are aware, this board instituted or approved in a new, a new process for, for motor vehicle. Again, I want to thank our workers out there that are doing a great job, and also to appreciate, send appreciation to our citizens for staying home. Certainly, the new process is of a positive impact, but our citizens have been working hard to honor that 30-day window for, for renewals on tabs and licenses. We do know through AMC that the renewal of tabs and licenses has been something that, that they're continuing to work on in hopes of providing some insight that if this is going to continue, that there'll be some state mandate that will allow a window for, for that renewals to, not to have to take place during. Over the weekend, I had multiple conversations and keeping updates with Kathy, and with our second verified case of COVID here in Clay County, and also in contact with the city of Morehead in, in regards to the press conference that will be happening on Wednesday. In addition to Kathy participating, Commissioner Haney is also going to be present, representing our board on Wednesday at 11:00. On the, yesterday, we continue with the updates. I think that the corrections facility, I spoke with Justin, they're, they have about 73 inmates in the, in the facility, and they're looking for if there are any additional people that they will be able to move. This was yesterday. They've had some challenges with staffing issues as far as they're, both the juvenile center and the, and the, and the corrections facility are testing employees' temperatures and asking the questions each, each day prior to their shifts, and so they've had some challenges that way. We've talked, I also participated by video conference of the juvenile center project. They have not seen a decrease in their, in their usage. Between their two programs yesterday, they had 62 youth that were there, and so that was, they're, they're not seeing a great deal of decrease in their, in their population. Just want to give a, just a few updates here from our governor's executive orders. To this point, Executive Order 20-13 has authorized the use of National Guard within Minnesota, should it need in a particular county. Executive Order 214 has suspended eviction processing to prevent loss of housing for our citizens during this pandemic. Yesterday, they announced a deed that's going to be established in a small loan, a small loan business program. There's going to be more information to come out on that. Also yesterday, we, we, the governor discussed wanting to see more data prior to moving in. We've had some discussions about whether we are going to be sheltering in place, and our governor's determined that, that he wants to see some more data should that happen. He has come out and said that in the event that he would make that decision, that grocery stores and pharmacies would remain open. And, but also warned that if he did make that decision, that we could be looking at multiple weeks to months of, of, of having that happen. So again, what he said has been successful to this point, is it's really kind of the Minnesota nice piece. He said Minnesotans have been, have been following the sheltering in place, and really going back about 10 days, and so that's had a positive impact on, on our, our spread. Governor Walz also indicated that, that he's looking to provide legislative, provided a proposal for legislation to, to get out for childcare providers, $30 million in hopes of, of making sure that we have coverage for, for our healthcare workers and our critical workers. So that, that is, and then just a couple, few other things to follow from last week. Commissioner Campbell asked about whether or not social services would be impacted with telecommuting. DHS has, has, has had a number of executive orders of suspensions of licensing issues and, and things like that, and Ron has confirmed that there's not going to be any issues at all with collecting for those services.
That, that's where we get paid for.
Reimbursement, reimbursement from the state. So the, just a note too, we, this Department of Revenue yesterday noted that both federally and, and our state is now going to match the new state federal filing guidelines of July, Wednesday, July 15th, without penalty or, or any interest for making your tax payment for, for 2019. We did, on our webpage, we did put up last week a small business loan. Clay County was approved for small business disaster declaration, and we have that on our website for any small businesses that, that have any, have a need there. I would address next week where we are scheduled to not meet. It's the, it's the fifth Tuesday of the month, and I don't know if the board has any desire to change that at all, given our situation or not.
I guess we could probably leave it up to you to let us know if you think something's important enough to have another meeting.
Okay. I guess part of what my thought process is, is providing Kathy and Gabe's update, and then if, if we do have come with something out of pick today, we may need, we may need to, we might need to have an extra or special meeting, meeting or emergency meeting, we may need to have, have that to give the feedback from the full board.
I, I think if anything else, you know, getting the update from Kathy and Gabe, I think is important. I think we have a deal here, if somebody can't make it, just like in the case with Commissioner Mojo today, we can call in, but somebody can be here. I'm blocks away, I can, I can certainly come over here. I'd rather have it than, and have nothing to do and go home than to not have it. During this time, we're in a, we're in a crisis situation here, we should be ready to meet, have it.
Okay, all right. And, and the township officers meeting that was canceled last week, they've determined they're not going to reschedule, they're just going to wait till fall to have that meeting. And lastly, I just wanted to touch, last night, I received an update from the census. Through last night, Clay County has had 20, 27% of their households respond to the census online by telephone or mail. The Minnesota average is about 25.6%, and just to kind of, for a target from 2010, we in Clay County hit 71.74.1%, and so we have some, some work to do. It was noted that because of the COVID, COVID virus, the census has, has adjusted the process of, of reporting. The first piece is the self, self-response phase that we're in right now is going to be extended from July 31st until August. Census takers are going to be starting to drop off reminders March 29th. That's delayed from, from March 15th. And early non-responsive followers, so for, for those of you that do not want people to respond, they, they're, they're going to delay that to, to May 28th. So if you haven't done, if you haven't done it online, or by mail, or phone, by May 28th, people are going to start coming to your door from the census. And so again, this could change as we go, but that was the adjustment that was announced last week. And that concludes my report.
Yeah, that census, just to talk about that, it's important that we do it, and it just takes a couple minutes. It's a very short response, and I encourage everybody to do that.
Mr. Chair, I want to go back to the DMV for a minute.
Yes.
You know, you mentioned that people are staying home, and I, just to give another reason why they, some of them should be able to stay home right now, there's been a demand based on the real ID requirements that had, you know, had an October 1 deadline, I think, that everybody was supposed to have that. Yesterday, the federal administration announced that that's going, that's going to be extended. They did not say till when yet, but I think they're, this week, they're. they're supposed to come out with that. And I think that, that's been also putting a little bit of demand on the DMV, and I think those who are concerned about meeting that deadline, and of course, that's the idea that they say is going to be needed to even be able to fly domestically. Nobody's flying right now, and not too many are, but, but once this settles down, I think that, that extension, you know, will help, right now, reduce some of the need to go there now. So I just wanted to bring that up, so.
Okay. Ryan, do you have any?
I just keep covering the fourth piece, so I think that's, that's good to go.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned.